Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We stand by inviting the questioner. Tinezin Benear Ram, and the chairman of the Code of Honor of Tegunat Tegunat Tegunat. I stand before the court for them. Mr. Chairman, I stand before the Court of Appeals. We are in the house of justice. Yes, we are in the water of justice. Where there is under any other business, our president, Mr. Sustina. Your case is under any other business. No, you can't argue your case before the House. And that or future events or something related to that. There are any other business. It's very possible that we have a party or we have a result. We need to close the meeting. But it will not be closed until...
Mr. Chairman, I am fresh. And I have a letter also for today. That I did not hear my name on my presentation. My name is Isa Wuzma. Against the management of the joint submission.
I said that all nine of your businesses. Your case is resolved. The passion is resolved. Come on. FC, are you here?
Yes, sir.
FC, yes, sir. Great. Thank you.
We have a clear call. I will have a brief talk.
And this year is under any other business. Your case is almost as big. Let me share it with you more. Relax. Well, today, we have... Let me just for the purpose of talking. In case of Tinezin, Benear Ramboz, person said, Chairman of Code of Honor of Tegunat Tegunat has done a celebrated case before Nagyrias. And today, we hear from them what has transpired till now. And for the benefit of all those of Nagyrias at home, we want to know, because the essence of asking both of them to come today and tell us the basis of withdrawal of the petition against CCT Chairman has transpired between the petitioner and Code of Honor of Tegunat Chairman. But we as committee wanted to prepare a force. We are not magician. A petitioner by my own understanding or a plaintiff in a regular court has a right to withdraw his petition or not before judgment. When we heard this letter, not the last thing, I called the petitioner. I said, I do not want to withdraw this petition with the knowledge of the lawyer. He said, no. If you have not lived up with the lawyer to bring in properly the basis of your withdrawal. But unfortunately, three or four days later, I have before the news. I have a reality. The lawyer says, maybe the Senate is compromising. Compromising for what? By senior citizen here, we live in fair hearing. We live in a treaty cases. The way it is. And we mandated the Code of Honor Chairman to be here today to come and inform Nagyrias what transpired between him and his petitioner. And therefore, that is why we are here today. We will give the floor. Before then, we will give the floor to the petitioner or to the respondent. Because we have spoken that three or four times on this matter. And today, Nagyria will hear how far they have gone. That is why today, we are minister out because they came to me. They said they are going to go. Go to the what? So that's why I will say, sir, you landed on this here. And this is a little bit. What I believe is that when the case, when the petition before said this, you don't go by... Yeah, no, no, I didn't want to beat the background. And we would have called you. Okay, so we give the floor. You can sit down. You have made your case before. You sit down, okay? Make a note. And then they will...
Mr. Chairman, first of all, we are asked to take a vote. And there are... Your honourable, so have said so. Next ready, it should take your votes. I...
Not touch lights.
I think some values around that. You solemnly affirm that the evidence is that if the vote is distinguished quantity, it shall be the truth. The vote is not only the truth. So I agree. Then we start. You solemnly affirm that the evidence is actually both the substance. It shall be the truth. The vote is not only the truth. So I agree.
So would you give the floor to the representative of Daradimumah? Why is she not here today?
This is the issue that still has us. I'm told who are they representing? Mr. Daradimumah. The respondent was supposed to be here today. But his unagretable assets has had a moment because he is sick. And because of that, he is not... That was why he is not able to come. He has asked us as his lawyers to represent him and most humbly present this before the House or before this honourable committee. If you ask him, may...
No, sir. No, no, sir. You understand? You ask for the reference. Reference one is the respondent not here. One is the respondent not here. For the reference of me.
Okay, exactly. The respondent...
Because you just said his one. And what they pay up. And we ask you what?
He is not here today because he is sick. He is been sick for some time now. That is why he is not here before he is this discussion. And he has asked us to openly inform him that he is not here because he is sick.
Has he been sitting? Has he been sitting? Has he...
I... I am not... In possession of that information.
Sorry, sir. Is he a lawyer? No, no. This is from tonight's...
Yes, I will... I can let you know. I, Toluwabiken, you solemnly offend that the evidence I shall give before this discussion committee shall be the truth. The old truths are nothing but the truth. So I agree. Yes, this discussion committee. I am representing the chairman, Mr. Daradimumah. And I am here to present for you the fact that he is sick. And because of that, he is not able to attend this meeting today. That is the reason why he is not here.
Please talk your way ahead. Sit down. Please, I see you are too late.
Sir.
You can tell us about the session. Do you have any...
Well, I... He informed us and we know that he is sick.
Well, because of the... Because of the... Sit down. And because of the fact that this particular case has attracted the president of Nagyrias. And we as the public, the deputy director of the people in this chamber wanted to give your body to tell us why he is not here. He told us. But the committee seem need to get evidence of his sickness. Because the first time, the second time, the third time, he is sick. I remember when I read the press some week ago. I said, we don't want to hear him know of sickness in this time. We want to the public to press it. But what I move comes before this committee to demonstrate that he is actually sick. But in the absence of that, we believe him. But he is also a judge. We believe him. Or we allow him to tell us the basis of withdrawing the petition. The one we see tell us, what was, what transpired between the petitioner and your client for him to write the sentence. You have to address that. Because that's what we demanded. As we definitely to know the reason why the guy has written to the Senate that he has been known his petition. And what transpired there after. That's what we want Nagyria to hear today. Okay?
Yes. Chairman and distinguished senator. The chairman of this committee did mention in his statement that my client has withdrawn his petition by bringing me later to the Senate, which I'm not aware of. I read this on the news and I replied accordingly that I'm not aware of any withdrawal of any petition. To the distinguished chairman of this committee, I wrote this letter and I saw I copy some members of this committee. This is later that I wrote. And the issue of whether my client or client has withdrawn the petition or not, to be honest, we are not aware. Our client has known with us. He has not informed us of any withdrawal and of any later. So we are highly surprised hearing this coming from the honourable distinguished... Chairman of this committee.
And who they are there. Let's ask your client. Because when we let... I will receive it. I will leave a letter to you. Look, you listen. I will still have to do the... You sit over there. I will mention this committee. When we receive the letter, I gave the photo to my client to send a copy to you. And I call this your petitioner. And he confirmed. I wrote the letter. So the petitioner now talk. The letter you sent to us that you informed your father that father asked for more of your petition. And I asked you to dance with your lawyer. Why you not the one who confirmed to all that you wrote the letter? Tell your Nagyrias and tell us what transpired between you and the Code of Honor Chairman for you to go and we know that the letter for this committee. Tell your Nagyria.
I have not run that. Of course, in this case, I have not used the...
Huh?
I'm not using the phone.
You said...
I'm not your husband's phone. You don't... I'm not the one that...
You don't want to help, please? The petitioner. You are the petitioner. Hello, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
You are the petitioner. And you can hear me very well. Please tell us your name, sir. So that we are not confused about that. And then you learn your fact. Okay. Did you send us a letter withdrawing your petition? Have you added any point? Withdrawn the petition before the Senate. To the petition states. And the phone number there. The phone number they put there.
How much, sir?
And I... I... I saw you. The phone number they put there. The bottom of your letter. And you confirmed to me. So we were waiting for the chairman. The clerk of the come to bring the couple of the letter. We want to restore for Nagyrias. Who has seen the letter? Because a copy of that letter was always sent to the lawyer. That come here. And bring it to the... Okay, please, for the purpose of those that are at home. This letter was received in my office on 6th of June, 2021. With the address of the letter is Clement Swagard. Here, Nakpat Dombor, flash 613, phase 4, Richie Road, Hoodru, Ames, Abuja. The chairman, General Committee on Attis Criminal Competition, National Assembly Committee, Claeam Zolo, Jaki Abuja. There, sir. The petition of Mr. Clement Swagard against the brutal assault and violent attack by the Code of Honor Tegunat Chairman, Daradimumah. I claim and sure that the petitioner in this matter hereby discontinue and or withdraw my petition only against Mr. Daradimumah, the honourable chairman of the Code of Honor Tegunat CCT. Thank you just faithfully. Clement Swagard, That was letter received by this committee. And immediately, I learned of this particular letter. I call this number. And you answer in the affirmative that your father asked you to go and what? And withdraw the petition. And I ask you a further question. That is, your lawyer, who have been acting chrome no bolo for you on this particular matter that has become a subject of this function all over the world? Is he aware that you have withdrawn the petition to send go? And I said, contact your lawyer and come back with a petition paper to this committee. And a new date was stated for hearing on this matter. Since then, and I order the clerk of these committees to get in touch with your lawyer, which is copy of this particular letter. To confirm whether you are the one or not. Since then, you never responded in black and white that you are not the person who came to have written this letter. I want to say the truth will come to us. Unfortunately, the Code of Honor Chairman again is not on seat today. But if you are representing him, I think the essence is to come and tell us what transpired for the Senate to receive this particular data before us. So, sir, you are representing. And where is the chief registrar of CCT? Where is he? Please come and have your seats. You need to tell us what surrounded the basis of this particular petition, this particular withdrawal from the committee. And what is the position now? You need to tell your what? So that members of the committee will have to look at it. What are the actions taken by Code of Honor Tegunat Tegunat or the Swagard who now denies? Who deny that he is not the one who wrote this letter? Then who would have written this letter? They said no one to go to the portal of the matter. Who wrote this letter? If the man now is denying. So what transpired between your client and the petitioner? Tell you what to hear. Please, let somebody give... They should give a seats, sir. The man next to the... Give a seat or the man there to sit down. The chief registrar of Code of Honor Tegunat. She sit down. And you have to be on court too. You have to be on court. Want to know what transpired this letter between your boss, the Code of Honor Tegunat Chairman and the petitioner in this case without the knowledge of... Of...
Distributor, the chairman. I would like to respond to your question. The... The letter, your question, I would you. First of all, we, with greatest respect...
And we... I thought he remember. Yeah, he said he denied that he didn't, that he... That... Yeah, I told. He said he was the father. Now he's deny that he is not the one.
First and foremost, we are not the maker of the documents. And we were not there when it made the documents. We cannot speak appropriately about the documents that our clients did not make. Since we don't have knowledge or we didn't make the documents. The one who made the documents who have denied it, possibly in a court of law, wherever he would appropriately tell the court whether he made the documents or not. As a matter of fact, Distributor, chairman and Distributor Committee, we have filed a matter in the high court in respect of this. And we have that process forwarded with a letter to your Distributor Committee. Apart from that, we also filed an originality summons accompanied with a motion notice at the Federal High Court challenging the powers of the committee to look into matters like this as is provided in the Constitution. So and this matter is already soljuice because it's before the courts.
It's very important for clear and accurate. This is a committee of national assembly. Incidentally, this committee supervises Code of Honor Tegunat. As part of the standing order of the Senate, this committee's supervisors oversee the activity of Code of Honor Tegunat. In the first time, we have a right to sue the chairman of that Tegunat to come and answer any case before his committee. Apart from that, this committee is a special committee of the Senate. And anything before it, we have right to hear it. But if the case are go to court before coming here, it's soljuice. National Assembly is an independent government. The function of the circuitry, we cannot perform the supervision. Except we cannot perform our own function. That is why if a case goes on in the regional government and not in the government before that from here, let before the Code of Honor Tegunat we say it's soljuice. It has been taken care of. Let the court go and talk that case. Not when the case is before National Assembly. Before now, we now go to hold a response. You don't go there to court. The court has told the good... The good... The court has told National Assembly to be here. Even if you just hear from this one, it is strong. And cases before to the... We have had the responding. We asked... We have had the petition. We now ask the reporter, go and take loss. Your own side. You lose sick... Sickness. First, second time, third time, fourth time now. You go with the custom that we can no longer hear the case. Okay? I'm not a lawyer, but I know the rule of day. The question is, sir, your mom will sit up to come and look at us. Even when we will have been through the case for court to hear the data, we must hear his own side. There are different views now. This question is from the one I wrote because I fully confess to me that his father has the wrong withdrawal. Now, it's not saying you know Nagyria that he has no withdrawal. And now you are saying you are coming with two originalities of the law to stop this committee from hearing this case. Ah! Even if the president will hear about this one. Where... Where you lose justice to... I mean, to stop it. Let your... It's over. So, sir. I think you can... You are a lawyer. You are the chairman of this area.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Cancel the respondent. What's a legal game, sir?
My name is Toluwabiken.
A member of the Natriamba?
Very well. Very well.
Thank you. Well, let me take us back. In the consensus, you didn't do well at all as an attorney standing in for a client. You stood before us here to tell us you were representing a client to tell us why your client was not present in court. You said there is. The chairman reminded you that there have been serious obligations. And this has always been the reason why you in court. You insisted it was because really he are busy. And then we ask you whether his court have been sitting. He presents over a court to Code of Honor Tegunat. Rather than you to say, oh, yeah, because of the sickness, he have not been sitting. Or he have been sitting. Because you are saying that if you answer that he have been sitting, that will be a contradiction to what you are saying. At that point, you found it convenient to say, oh, you couldn't relate. Tell whether a court sees. If a court not sees, public knowledge. And to represent somebody, that's a question you should be able to ask. You didn't comment all the time that you say that it's because she was ill. Nobody brought any medical reports to this place or a letter from the doctor and it's to show. And that's a honourable thing to do. Now, this...